Call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. So as a preliminary matter, this is Aaron Van De Steen, the Chair of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee. Please can permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to affirmative. Debbie Jackson.
Hi.
Beth Schreiber.
Hi.
John Babriski.
Bye.
All right. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and such. As such, the Governor's order suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies encouraged, allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you'll find on the town's website at www.grafton-ma.gov allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations in the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is convening via Zoom video conference. As posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. This, this meeting, okay, it is being recorded. Just wanted to validate. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided and members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first read public comments, questions received in advance of the meeting, followed by real-time board or applicant responses. Public comments during the meeting will be conducted through the Zoom chat feature. I will read real-time comments or questions typed by computer participants in the chat feature, followed by real-time board applicant responses. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Great. So turning to the first item on the agenda. We have the approval of minutes from November 30th, 2022. Do I have a motion on the floor to? Or could I have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes?
This is Beth. I'll make a motion for approval minutes from November 30th, 2022.
Okay, any second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? So my only question is, are these the minutes? So did we didn't meet at all then in December? Is that correct? Okay. Okay. So wasn't there minutes that we needed to approve prior to that? Or did we get to that? Because I, I know we felt that we didn't see the minutes. And, and so we took a break not to approve them. I could be misremembering. But, but I think Debbie, you said, no, I sent those on like November 4th. In that we all should have gotten it because at the November 30th meeting, I felt that like we hadn't seen them. But you said you sent them out really quick. So anybody want to comment on that?
So are you talking about October minutes or November 30th minutes?
Probably October minutes.
Okay.
That would have been sent early November.
The motion is for November 30th. So if we want, we can approve November, but then I don't think we can add October. We'd have to wait until our next meeting and make sure everyone read them.
Yeah. So this is just
We might be behind.
Discuss, discussing minutes. We can discuss after, but I'm not expecting to approve any other minutes, you know, that's not on the agenda. But okay, any
It's very likely that we both forgot that we hadn't gotten our October approval when we were making the agenda. But we do send out the agenda and ask for feedback and things to be added. So I'm always hoping that you guys can help be a safety net and go, oh, what about October?
Well, that's, I know, that's what I was searching for in my email, but I sent an email from the clerk's office just so that we can level set on minutes for this committee.
Great.
So I'm happy to take that offline.
Okay.
Great. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Hey, Aaron, I, I checked and the notes from the November 30th meetings say that we did not approve minutes from the previous meeting, which was November 2nd.
Yep.
Because I guess I sent them out too soon and then didn't send them back as a follow-up right before the meeting. So those have not been approved, but we can add that to the next agenda.
Okay. Great. So any further discussion on the November 30th motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, Aaron? I. Beth?
I.
John?
I.
Debbie?
Hi.
Great. I declare the motion carried. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the draft, ongoing business, which is the draft art display policy. Have we received that back from legal?
No, no, I did reach out to Cindy I to ask when the next scheduled office hours were. And she does not have a date. So I'm guessing because of holiday stuff that that's why she usually comes on the first and third Wednesday, but she wasn't available as far as I know this week. So I anticipate that I will be able to sit down in front of council in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussion about the draft art display policy? I have a question. In terms of if the policy comes back. I guess we as a policy subcommittee can decide if we want to bring it to the Board of Trustees for approval and enactment, right? And I think the general discussion was, you know, how do we go about bringing a new policy to the library that, you know, adds additional responsibilities and, you know, load on the current staff? So I don't know if anybody has feelings since the last time we spoke, or if it's still the sentiment that it may still be difficult to, to, as soon as it comes back and just take it to the board and put it in place. I'm happy to do that if, you know, the feedback from the library staff is, yeah, we're ready for this.
Yeah.
So.
There's, John, there's also the thing about how we should give the the other trustees some time to review it. So we should probably, if we, if we aren't able to send it out like, you know, a few weeks in advance, then maybe it's just something that we bring to the attention of the board and then the following meeting, we can vote on it whether or not to approve it. I think that was said during the, the larger board meeting last month. Well, I think, Aaron, you and I weren't there, but I think I saw that in the recording, so. But unfortunately, I don't have any thoughts on the the employees and the staff.
Yeah. Just to comment on, on what John, John just said, I think for expediency sake that that might work better. You know, as a procedure for us bringing stuff to the board, you know, unless it's something that is urgent, urgent, urgent. You know, there should be very few policies that we, that we deem as like emergency urgent changes, right? So those should be few and far between. It kind of reminds me of something we put together at work. Like I do change management every week at work and if you have something that's an emergency, it has to go for emergency approval to the higher level management. Otherwise, it can wait till next week, even though, you know, you're trying to get your job done. You know, it doesn't, if it's not emergency, it doesn't need to be an emergency and it can wait and it can be approved by a committee and then, you know, it can go in place. So that process works very well for me at work. And I, I think it's very similar to the way that, you know, we, we may want to bring stuff to the, to the board is, you know, say, this is, this is what we've done and take time to review it. We're going to vote on this next meeting. So.
So one, one thing that might be helpful is if we decide as we, as we pick our next meeting date, which I think is probably February 1st and March 1st, like it seems to be the first week of the month. We could discuss also discuss what policies are we going to talk about in February? And then send them to the board tomorrow and say, we're going to talk about these in a month. Send your feedback before our next, our next board meeting so that we have time to synthesize it. So that we have your comments to integrate when we come to our next policy committee meeting. I have been feeling very flying by the seat of my pants and being reactive and not able to plan ahead because of the volume of workload I've been dealing with over the past year and a half. And it's unfortunate. But that's sort of the repercussion. And oh my gosh, we're meeting. What do we need to talk about? Okay, let's pull it together. Crap, we didn't get that out in a timely manner to solicit feedback either from staff or the board. Like ideally, I would have been on the top of my game and sent out parking policy and vehicle charging station policy to the entire board and the staff and said, everyone, take a look at this. You can send comments to John and Aaron and Debbie.
So I have a suggestion. I'm looking at our, our agenda tonight. And I don't see any place for you know, that's that discussion. So perhaps we add it to our agenda to talk about. You know, for, for each of us to, to bring a policy that we think we should do next, or maybe we just go by the list and say, you know, in, in that way, you know, we're, we're scheduling that discussion. We're making sure that we discuss that every meeting. So.
And like really, we should have, like, we should have reviewed snow policy like in November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Debbie, what are, what are your thoughts to adding that as an agenda item? Do you think it'd be useful, helpful?
I've already made a note.
Perfect. Great. Anything for you, John? Okay. All right. So we're still on the art display policy. Any further discussion or questions regarding? Oh, yeah. So is that a discussion that you could put on your next staff meeting agenda, Beth?
Yeah.
Because it honestly, if the consensus and, and the feedback you're getting from your staff, and this is not something that you feel is ready to be put in place, then I want to hear that feedback.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So security camera policy. Is that another one that's still with legal?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, okay. So I sent the policy to legal and she made grammatical corrections.
Yep.
Based on the policy that she approved already. Two years ago or three years ago, had like a lot of grammar like, and she's like, this is nitpicky. It's not urgent. And we also have accompanying that policy, a form, like a request to review camera footage. And she said, you, you really don't need that. You can just use the standard request for public records form for people to get the video camera footage. You can drop this form that you made separately. But the concern that she wants to sit down and like talk face to face about was my question about can we add a line in our policy that we only accept requests to review footage or public record requests for video camera footage for incidents that happen on the libraries or in the library's property that we're not going to even respond to what happened on the street outside or on the common or like it has to be in the building or in the parking lot or on the ground. Because we're getting a lot of accident questions.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. But, you know, from, from a from a someone who lives in Grafton. From that perspective, I don't know where all your cameras are, right? I don't know where they're pointing. And, you know, all I know is oh, an incident happened, you know, in front of the library. I know they have cameras. I wonder if they caught anything. Right? So that, that's what you're going to get a lot of, not people saying, I know there's a camera here and, and I want that footage.
But so I've said, I responded with let there, really the cameras don't, don't extend that far. And they want photo shot, like screenshots to prove it. Yep. Okay. Look, really, there's nothing. I don't have anything that is useful for you.
Yeah. So this is John. I thought there was also something where we just in general wouldn't respond to general public requests and it would have to go through the police anyway? Is that, am I misremembering that?
I think the footage says that anybody can, so the policy says that anybody can request, but we're not giving it up without the form, even for police. Yeah, we, we can take a look at the policy. I can pull it up if you want. Or we can review it and you can send me questions and I'll bring them to Jenny. But I can pull it up.
Sorry. So
I have a policy from December 19th.
Yeah, that's the draft which took out or added the line that says we, we can only do library property request.
Okay.
This is the current approved policy from, I think, 2020.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step on you, John.
No, that's all right. I don't, I don't remember what I was going to say. I think, I think it was, I thought it was related to the police thing, but I don't, I don't remember now. So never mind.
Okay.
You may be right. So it says for investigations initiated by law enforcement agencies, recorded data will be made available to law enforcement upon presentation of a valid court document and completion of the request for video footage form.
Yeah, I guess to me that kind of implies that we were really only providing this footage to to law enforcement, you know, for official purposes. And I mean, I guess one way to, to kind of, I mean, especially if the cameras don't point to any usable thing. And you know, like if they just simply don't show the roads, there's no reason for someone to want those things. I mean, and I think that if someone was on the library grounds and they thought you know, something had been stolen from them while they were there, in theory, they could go to the police and probably get, you know, have the police fill out this form and that sort of thing to investigate. And so I think if we, if we were to say in the policy that we just don't give out footage to non, you know, law enforcement essentially that, that would be an easy kind of shutdown for all these requests that you've been getting. You know, just to say it's our policy that we don't give out that footage and that would kind of, you know, stop you from having to waste your time dealing with that.
Yeah.
Is there any downside to that?
No, it's actually right here that we wouldn't allow the general public to view it directly. And if we receive a request, we advise them to file a police complaint. So perhaps all we need to do is make sure Grafton Police Department is aware of this. Because I know in at least one circumstance, they, they said, we'll check the library. They have cameras. But really like the request would have to come through the police department.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this might actually just be us not knowing our own policy. By us, I mean me.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
That, that's why we're a committee and not just one person.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just say, I mean, if there is a situation that arises that requires an amendment to the policy, then you know, then that's something we could look at. So that's it.
Okay. I did have another question for, for legal, but I, I think, I think we've, we've talked about it. So I guess what? What is it that you're going to discuss in person with legal regarding that policy?
I don't think I need to that. I think the policy outlines that requests should be coming from the police department, not the general public.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's what I'll enforce.
Yep.
Yeah. Sure. Give us the, the document and the warrant and we'll provide it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Next item on the agenda is a meeting room facility policy review. Do we have on the agenda? Edits that, that we're looking to make or is this, is this general review of the policy or is this for the second item agenda that says Apple Tree Arts Community Chorus?
It's related to Apple Tree Arts, who I think since Chuck isn't here.
Yeah.
And he just sent out a memo that Chorus is meeting in the same old location.
Yep.
It may be a moot point. I don't know if you feel like it's worth discussing. He asked, and I, if, if Chorus, which is a January through May, every Tuesday night from seven to nine, seven to eight 30 event could meet onsite. And yeah, we have a piano. It needs to be played. That would be great. Sure. And then wait a minute, people have to pay to join Chorus.
Yep.
So our, and our policy is no one has to spend money to attend programming. And anybody can walk into that meeting technically. Right? And I said, well, the other piece is I'm in Chorus. And I don't want, because, because he said, oh, you can just, you know, work until six or six 30 and then just walk right down the stairs and come to Chorus rehearsal on Tuesday night. Like that would be convenient, but I also don't want any inkling of the directors making policy exceptions to my benefit. And the third piece is, I said, but wait, we do have other paid membership organizations that we allow to meet onsite, specifically Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. I had to pay, you know, 35 bucks for Josie to join for the year. And even though I don't ask if they're collecting dues at those meetings. And we also just had Girl Scouts ask if they could do a free event, but it's a, it's open to anybody, including non-Girl Scouts for recruitment purposes. So there's a lot of like, we, I felt the intent of the meeting rooms is free and open to the public and anybody can go to any meetings and we're balancing that with, but you can have your business meeting there. And if you're a member of this paid group, you can have your meeting. And really nobody's barging in to say, darn it, I'm going to come to the Girl Scout meeting, even though I'm a 35-year-old male and sit in on the Girl Scout meeting. Like it just, like it really hasn't been an issue. So.
Yeah. I mean, it's certainly you know, it, it doesn't seem like it's the first question on having a large organization or even a small organization, you know, want to use that room for, for regular meetings. I took a look at the policy and, and I made a few highlights of my own. You know, it's
Not fair.
I can. Yeah. So I mean, thinking of like Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. So I, I see meeting rooms are available to community and nonprofit groups and organizations for meetings that are educational, cultural and or civic in nature. I see Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts certainly fitting that criteria, you know, to the letter.
Yeah. Apple Tree Arts is a nonprofit, I believe. You know, that $35 to join Community Chorus covers the time and the space and, you know, printout or music, music licensing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the meeting space shall not be used for entrepreneurial commercial purposes. So I don't know that either groups are really selling anything, right?
Yeah.
The other part that I highlighted was the provision of the meeting space is not the primary issue of the library and must always be subordinate to the paramount need to provide a safe, peaceful and respectful environment in which to read and study, right? So I only highlighted that one because you know, performance can be loud, even practice can be very loud.
Yeah.
And you know, it, do we have to look at things like, well, how many, how like room capacity versus, you know, the volume of, of noise that a group could make based on how many people are in there? Like, I think we wrote policy with room capacity requirements in mind for having a meeting, not, not a, not a performance. Of, you know, right? You have one person performing and, and, you know, 75 people in there, but then 75 people performing is kind of a different, different thought.
There might be something about noise in the facility rental piece because it assumes that people might be having an after-hours party that goes late.
Yep.
But I don't know that if there, I feel like there might not be a noise ordinance in Grafton.
Yep.
Or even quiet hours in Grafton.
Yeah, I might, I might say after nine o'clock for outdoor stuff, but not indoor stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, nine o'clock, I think I'm being a little aggressive, but I know just down at the Holden Farm, I think there were some noise complaints there and they talked about putting up walls for their outdoor stuff.
Yeah.
But this is an indoor event.
Yeah. And it is some of the sound will carry up the stairs. Some of the sound will carry down to the children's and teen space, but with the piano lid closed and the doors closed, I think it, it wouldn't be terrible. The other, the other piece though, though, is that he had asked, and then in the meantime, some meetings had already been booked, including like Select Four is going to have a hearing, like a public hearing on something. And I think workshop kind of a meeting, one in January, one in February. And they meet Tuesday night. So already like we can't, and then we have a library program in April. So already we can't do the whole run of the session. So I feel like I can go back to him and say, if you're in a pinch and Apple Tree Arts is doing a performance and they need the space because they're having, you know, tech week and you're getting kicked out, or as happened in the fall, Small Stones has taken up the space to do the art gallery display for Small Stone Festival of the Arts for two weeks. And now Chorus is looking for a place and that's kind of like, all right, there's nowhere else to go. It's last minute. It's only once.
Yep.
We'll be able to experiment and see how that goes and what the public response is in terms of it looks like noises.
Yeah. Yeah. So as long as any group doesn't violate the policy, I mean, policy's there. You know, to give guidelines and also to protect people, right? So a lot of times, like if nobody's really, like if somebody's violating a, a policy and they're not hurting anybody. I mean, it, it, it's okay. We don't know policy 100% to the letter. We try, but we're all human. You know, so we, we can be a little flexible, but it's, it gets to the point where it's like, yeah, you know, you're really being disruptive. You really can't have such a large group here and the policy says so. It's, you know, so I think as long as they're not violating any policy. It it, it's a real stretch for a library. I've not heard of a chorus, you know, having practiced at a library before, which is why it kind of floored me. But hey, you know, this is the first time we've had this kind of room at our library.
Or piano.
Yep.
And of course, like the irony is Apple Tree Arts is also just renovated and they have a space.
Yeah.
They only have the one large space and they do run it feels like every quarter there's, you know, sign, sign up your kids and there's, I think they're doing a selling bee play and, you know, they did the junior version of Elf. So they're always in, you know, six to eight weeks of practice, tech week, a show, and then a two-week break, and then back into production. And they always have a space. So I get it.
So the, the only thing that I would caution, you know, the four of us about if, if, you know, we say, yeah, this doesn't violate any policy. You know, let, let, let's try it out and make sure you don't violate the policy or, you know, make sure you don't cause too much noise, right? And they, and they go in and they cause a lot of noise, right? And they say, well, it's your fault because you didn't soundproof the place, you know, well enough. You know what I mean? Like, how are we to say you guys are too loud or you need to be quiet down? It's like, well, we're 75 people, you know? I'm not saying 75, but you know what I mean? So it's only, I'm just cautioning that, you know, there could be pushback also. I'm not saying that they would. But, you know, people say, well, you built this room for, for large use and you you shut the doors and you guys shouldn't hear anything because of the way the building was built and, and, you know, they could complain about that.
And that'd be nice if they had soundproofed.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another piece too, is that, well, you could move rehearsal to Sunday. Move rehearsal to Sunday.
Yeah.
Or Friday night and rent it.
Yeah.
Do after hours and then you're not bothering anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
A quick question, Beth, about how many people is is that is the chorus?
Um, I keep saying seventy five. Yeah, I think it is more like sixty.
Oh, is it?
It's between forty, you might say forty eight to sixty. Yeah.
Okay.
The number. Yeah.
Okay, because I was just for Aaron and John's sake too, we've had quite a few discussions on staff. Too about how quiet do libraries need to be anymore? You know, there are more community centers. It's not? Old ladies and cardigans shushing everybody all the time, you know, with their meeting places, their community centers, their there's they're active. I mean? That New Year's at Noon party was rocking the other day. I'll tell you, we had a hundred and forty eight people in there and it was it was a big party. But and it and it carried out into the rest of the library, you know, but that's? It was a great event for everybody. So I mean, it was just that's something to think about too, as we discuss that.
And, you know, in in the old building when we didn't have the quiet study and tutoring rooms, we would say, you know, there's just no place to send people? For quiet study. So you can come when it's when we know it's going to be quieter, like not after school, when not Saturday afternoon and we'll we'll sell you earbuds or we'll give you earplugs. But until we have a different space? You're going to be competing, people who want to study and people who, you know, want to have a conversation in a study group versus quiet study. People who are tutoring versus the people who wants person who wants to study up with their solo on their test. But our tutor rooms are perimeter of the building and away from? Generally, the large spaces like in the children's room. Yeah, probably if you went in and shut the door to the children's tutor room at New Year's at Noon, you'd still hear it's a hundred and fifty kids. And families. But you would also have the option to say, you know what? Can we go upstairs? Is two nineteen available? Is is the three seat group study all the way in the other corner available? So generally, there's there are always other options. To say nothing to the fact, we can also say, hey, there's headphones. You can put white noise on. There's a TV if you want to put music on and try and drown some of that out. So now we do have kind of refuge. Right away who feels like the the more common spaces are just too loud at this moment for me to focus. We have options. Where we didn't before. And we still have headphones and earbuds. And earplugs like noise cancelling, need a little ear diaphragm earplug. For free.
And I'm also kind of surprised. And I'm not at the library as much as you guys are, but when I do visit the? The the historic reading room, like there's nobody ever in there. I always thought that would be a great spot for like a like a cappella performance or something. Not especially that it's empty too, but I'm surprised that, you know, people don't go and sit there anymore.
Yeah, teenagers do after school, the ones that like the high school kids who don't want to deal with the schoolers? Will go up there, but it's, you know, one or two kids. And they'll also take up the large print room. And I know the other day there was like three kids and they're having a conversation and they weren't loud, but I was like, you probably should be in a? Study room because you're talking. And you may not like they're being not realizing they might be intimidating to someone who wants to go look at the large print books because they're sitting there having their, you know, robotics club or AP physics or whatever discussion. Right? And in new large print, new bookroom.
Yeah.
They like all spaces.
What'd you say? They like all the spaces?
The high school kids really seem to utilize all the different spaces in the building, except? The young adult room. Because that's where the eighth graders are.
Okay, well, I have one more question. And it's related to piano because we mentioned it in terms of, you know, that large meeting room space. So the last time I I visited and I haven't looked through the? The the last trustee meeting, but? Someone said that? We that the library inside that the piano cannot be used because it doesn't have insurance yet and that? People aren't allowed to touch it.
We're waiting for Capitol Campaign to respond to an email, I think, that says, yes, you absolutely own it and can insure it. And then we can ensure it and then we can make it available, but? We have somebody who paid to rent the space and use the piano on January eighth, which is this Sunday. And he's going to use the piano.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to come.
I'll follow up with town.
Playing on the piano. I've got a I've had a great repertoire. And I'm kind of sick of playing at home, so I'm ready to move up to the library.
All right, I'll I'll let that forward.
Yeah, and certainly if I can help, let know.
It's got to get played. You know, it really needs to be played.
Yeah, I want to play it big time.
Yeah. We did run the player mode for the program we did with Willard House and and Clock Museum. We had it like they had like cocktail hour kind of a thing and we let it run.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion about the meeting room policy?
I do just want to say that extending the? Usage to you can register four times in a row, whether that's four days in a row, four weeks in a row, four months in a row. People really are appreciating that, I think, and it hasn't been hard for me, I would say, to keep track of. You know, I just somebody asked for eight tutoring sessions, I think, like eight Saturdays in a row. So I approved the first four and then I was able to put a note? And leave the other four unapproved just to say, like, prove this one after the seventh of January and this one after the fourteenth, so we can? Be aware that no, they've already got four like live on the books and now they need to do one, have one meeting before we approve the next. And I have not heard feedback from staff. But if we're going to talk about policy, I can check in and say, has it been a problem? Has it been okay? We'll call back.
I think. Yeah, that's great feedback and certainly I'm I'm pleased to also note that that was? I I think a suggestion of somebody who from the public who joined last time about how how many meetings, you know, we should a lot of books. So I'm glad that's? Glad we're hearing from the community and I'm glad that, you know, people seem to like it. But yes, certainly let us know what the staff have to say.
I did make an exception for the Metro West. Board, I think it's Board of Building Officials? Which our local building inspector is actually the current president of. They meet at like nine from nine to twelve AM on one Tuesday a month. And it's not a time when the room is in demand and they have like eight meetings a year. So I did go ahead and schedule them for their whole year. And they gave us a two hundred and fifty dollar donation to our gift account. So I wrote a thank you note and gave them a tax deduction letter. So they don't like technically have to rent it. The custodian's happy to let them in. They have like thirty to fifty people show up for those meetings and they're happy, very happy with the space and the location.
I love that we have a meeting room now. I honestly do. That the groups are starting to use. I I don't see it in use enough when I visit, but I'm also probably they're not at a prime meeting time.
I I will also say we've had continued roof leakage. We're close to getting to the bottom of it. And right now we have plastic on part of the carpeting and some of the tiles are down from the ceiling as we trace exactly what's happening. And the piano has now been relocated from side B near the kitchen back to side A so that it doesn't get dripped on. You know, as long as it's dry, we can move it around and make the space flexible, but it's not the prettiest space at the moment. It is still usable. In progress.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, move on. We have the parking policy. So I pulled? Everything that we had. Okay, there was a few different elements, though, that we felt needed to be considered, like the vehicle charging policy.
Yeah.
What else?
Yeah, one of my questions was, we? We hadn't approved parking policy. We edited and updated it when we went to St. Andrews and then we edited it when we moved back. I believe to the common. And then also had these vehicle charging stations seconded with. So I drafted a completely new separate electric vehicle charging? Policy. Can they be integrated? And if so? Can somebody who's not me? Do that work? And then we also want to make sure that there's no conflict. Like if we say no overnight parking in the parking policy? But the vehicle charging policy says people can pay to plug in if they want to overnight, but they're going to incur fees. Like, we don't. We don't want those to conflict with each other. So you're you're still co-host here. If you want to pull up something or you have notes, I'm happy to look at both.
No, I'm just pulling up all the policies on my own screen just so I can take a look, but I I think that's that's a great suggestion. I'll certainly open the Florida Volunteers who would like to? Merge the two documents. So we wouldn't have a so the draft? Electric vehicle charging policy should should be integrated with the parking policy. Is that? What we're talking about? Okay, yeah. You know, I'm certainly open to assisting with that. John, what what are your thoughts? Is that something you'd like to work on?
Uh, yeah, I can. I could do that if I have? Access to the the documents in an editable form, I think. Are they in Google Docs or Microsoft Word?
They're in Word, but there's no reason I can't pick them up as a Google Doc. I I think we had a point where somebody on the board had a lot of trouble with Google Docs. So they wanted everything back in Word. I have back to do to just edit? On Google Docs, but also our town. We are losing our town Google Suite. At any time. We don't know when.
Oh, right.
I'm trying to now limit. We're going to be using Office 365.
Right.
Which I assume is similar. I've actually never used it that way.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, all the office products in a, you know, online accessible form and? It's a whole license thing, so.
But I can stick it up as a Google Doc and then share that and give everybody editorial permission.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I can. I can take that on. There was? Should we should we talk about the policy itself now or?
So the the last version of the policy I found was a PDF, right? So as long as it's it's not an edible PDF, but Beth, you seem to think you can find.
Yeah, so there's the I thought that I sent out the original approved ones. My twenty one draft and then the twenty.
Okay. Okay, no, I'm good. Okay, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, so, yeah, I read it through. It's pretty similar to the old one. And I only had really? One minor like grammar correction, which is actually? At that, the the end of the first paragraph. Up, sorry, up one more. Visitors are invited to park library's parking lot. So I think we're missing. There we go. In the live in the libraries, but it's visitors are invited to park in the library's parking lot. Yeah, so that was the only kind of spelling thing. And then number three. So during local community events? Conducted during library hours of operation, signage stating library parking only, maybe posted in advance. Should that really be like a procedure? Does that need to be? A policy or part of the policy?
I think that's a good point. We can just take it out. It's a procedure.
Because I I almost in a way think it might encourage people? If they happen to read the policy to be like, well? You didn't put the sign out. I mean, the rest of the policy to me is pretty clear, you know? But? I I just don't think that needs to be in here, so? I think that's really all I had. Yeah, and so, I mean? I guess what once we're done with this tonight, I can? And I and I get access and everything, I can? Work to merge these things, these two things together? Without, you know, basically without trying to modify? Anything so that we don't have to really spend too much time to re-review everything.
Yes. Thank you, John. That so line twelve? So? We had an incident of some teens? Using or biking through the the parking lot and doing things that were inappropriate to staff cars and, you know, generally? Doing things that were unsafe to them and maybe to others. I think that line there suffices, right? I mean, I don't know that they're violating a law. But they're they're being unsafe.
Yeah. Public nuisance, for sure.
Do we have anything about safety?
That line was? You hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that there's also references? Our wonderful penderhearted staff concern about dogs and vehicles. Because if they're on their lunch break and it's eighty degrees and someone has come to return a book or go to a program and left their puppy in the car? The staff are going to call the police or animal officer. Because that is that is now a state law that after a certain temperature, you're not allowed to do that. So it's a? That that line was added out of that original concern.
Okay.
And I also think if there's a traffic accident that happens in the parking lot, the patrons should come into the library and the staff should call the police and have the police come and? Deal with it with the patron.
Okay.
So that's that's kind of what that covers.
So that I'll probably take it offline and, you know, really think about? If we need to add something more to the policy about? You know? Being safe in a parking lot. I don't know what other parking policies tend to say at libraries or even just just? Any place in general? Or even if it needs to be in here, but I feel like? You know, we expect we expect people not to be climbing the poles, the the light poles in the parking lot. I've seen that happen. You know, general loitering, like it's okay to loiter like in and around the library grounds, but not in the parking lot.
I think, I mean, would that be covered under normal code of conduct, though? You know, if if they're actually like? You know, touching other people's cars in a? I don't know.
Yeah.
In a vandalist way, I guess. You know, or or causing other disruptions, like just preventing people from using the parking lot in a normal manner. I feel like that would fall under code of conduct and just normal? Normal usage of the library. So I I feel like there wouldn't really need to be anything? Specific to the parking lot? Unless it's? Really? About like biking or skateboarding in the parking lot, like if that's a really? You know, that may not be, someone may not intentionally be doing that in an unsafe way, but just by? Biking? Or skateboarding or or whatever through the parking lot, they may just inadvertently, you know? Cause someone distress if they someone bikes out in front of them or things like that. I forget, did we? Is there something about? I thought there was something about biking? That you're not supposed to bike through the parking lot? Is that code of conduct, actually?
I can call up code of conduct. I think it's bikes and roller skates and skateboards are not allowed in the library. And I think roller skates and skateboards not on premises at all, but? We do have bike racks and we want to encourage people to be green and ride their bicycles to work or?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we we reference the code of conduct up here in the second paragraph, so?
Yeah.
So we're covered and then hang on a second and I'll see if I can open it.
Yeah, I thought I thought I remember seeing something that you're not supposed to really ride your bike around the parking lot. You know, you're kind of supposed to be off the bike.
Well, you can have threatening behavior. So if you're aggressively riding your bicycle at a car as it's trying to back out and daring the driver to hit you like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Which is against the law, threatening behavior. Or if you're saying F you to patrons while they're coming in the library because you think it's funny, you know, creating a disturbance and threatening behavior.
Yeah, okay, so I think what I'm hearing is a lot of what we're talking about is library code of conduct and that? The code of conduct extends not just within the library's walls, but also outside the library's walls and within library grounds.
Yeah, yeah. And here it is, John, and bicycles and scooters should be secured by law and the bicycle rack outside. It doesn't say they need to walk their bicycle up to it, but?
Okay.
Caper, rollerblades, scooters and similar equipment may not be used in the library or on library grounds and then to prevent skateboarders? From riding on our concrete benches and tiered seating. We've actually got like blocks, so you can only get so far and then you're.
Yeah.
Still.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm I'm fine with that. I just wasn't sure what the? That additional section that you mentioned about the scooters and stuff, so I'm I'm fine with all that. And like I said, I feel like that covers us for the parking lot as well.
I also think one of the things I didn't do when I? Sent out the draft is we've got a new clause about? Making it our appeals process. That before I put it in the Google Doc, I'll add to the end of it so that that's covered. And then we also talked about making sure once they're online, everything's hyperlink. So where we reference the code of conduct, like there'll be a hyperlink too. Once it's approved and posted.
Yeah. Great. Great. So is there anything that, I guess. After, you know, we, we finish our discussion, whether there's anything that needs to go to the next library trustee board. I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. So. Any further discussion about the parking policy? Okay, hearing none.
Sorry, um, did we want to talk about the vehicle charging policy?
Oh, yeah.
If you have comments, sure. Yep.
I had one comment about it. Can someone pull it up? So in. Section E. So the, the overall policy, I think is fine. It was just the wording on section E and then I guess. It kind of applies to F. So in section E, it says after one hours of charging, if a vehicle remains onsite plugged in. Not charging and preventing other users from charging, an additional fee of 15, 15 cents per minute will be assessed. So. Uh, you know, I think that the intent there is to just prevent people from leaving their car there all day after charging it. I just wanted to make sure it's that basically an hour after their car has finished charging. Is that?
Yeah, although I don't.
Or are they only allowed to charge for one hour?
I think it's whatever time it takes to charge. And then if it's idle, let's say.
Right.
Taking up the space for over an hour, then the fee kicks in. But I might have to go back to the AMP UP interface and look at. If there's like a way for them to make it not kick in for an hour.
Yeah, so. I just, I just wanted to make sure it was like basically an hour of, an, an hour of idling, you know, after the car has been charged. Again, the, the policy itself is fine. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. And then if I would. I'm kind of assuming that the app. The app may know what policies we've set for it, if that's something we have control. So hopefully. Maybe we can add a note in here about the app, you know, the app can be set up to notify you. You know, when your car is finished charging or something like that. And also. Yeah, and, and I don't know about F if. If, if that's something that could also be notified about, but I, I guess if it is a feature of the app, then maybe we could just put it in there that, that's. Available to, for someone to be notified about.
Okay, I can find that out. I suspect. If that's a feature, it's not turned on because I know we had somebody who left their car overnight and then was upset at the charge. And my response was, you're right, we don't even have the full policy yet. I can't give you a refund, but I can give you a code so that you can charge for free for now.
Yep.
And there's never been, not yet anyway, four cars parked charging. And people competing for it.
Yeah.
So it might be that we don't need E, we really only need F, which is there's a, a full occupancy surcharge period. And not, you have it tacking on 15 minutes, 15 cents a minute. That's. That's a lot. I, I believe that I did a survey of other costs before setting the price. Um, and I can, this, this is all funded through a grant. I did confirm through the grant that we were allowed to charge for this. The idea is we'll recoup some costs and be able to. Pay, pay on our energy bill if we need to, or for repair, say to the vehicle charging stations. We've made like 75 bucks in a year.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I was just assuming like as, I, I don't own an EV yet. But as someone who, you know, would definitely, if I had an EV or when I get an EV, I'll definitely use that. That feature of the library. I was just thinking like, how would I know that my car is finished charging? And then I guess I would need to go out, you know, if, if I was planning on being there for several hours, the library, I would need to go out and move my car. Which I think is fine. Yeah, so, but it'd just be nice if we put in the little thing there if, if the. The app provides that as a feature to notify patron.
So I have kind of a, a different thought about this particular policy. I mean, especially that it's going to be merged into our parking policy. How? How long do we think the fee structure may stay kind of as we designate here in this policy? Does it make sense to even pull out, you know, the fee structure and like reference something else like, you know. A, a Q, not a QR code, but maybe a QR code, but a link or something that directs people to like up to date information about what our fee structure is. That way we don't have to put it in policy, review it in policy, get it to go to the board for review and policy and like be voting on this. I don't know how often we'll change the fees, but you know, it could be often if, you know, this is our first time trying this.
Yeah, it, it should show in AMP UP, the app. And it would be also a simple matter to print a QR code that leads to a website that we could update a little bit easier. So that if people need that information. Yeah, I would be fine with taking costs out entirely.
Yeah, I feel like it's not really a, something that needs to go to the board for review all the time, but I don't know, maybe it does. Maybe, you know. We want, we do want to take a look at what we're charging people for. For electricity.
I've both had pushback that, you know, so and so doesn't charge. Why are you charging? And so, well, you know, Wegmans can afford to support your vehicle charging. We can't work public library municipal government. And people who've said, oh, my gosh, that's so cheap. I'm coming here just to charge. So.
Come on.
Yeah.
And so we, we do turn a profit on that $1 per hour?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that we've actually been able to acquire any of the money that we've collected, but.
Yep.
But yeah, I can run a report and get the amount.
I mean, I'm. I'm fine of more, I'm, I'm fine with like kind of like more information. Everywhere. So if we wanted to like. Leave the fees in, but then say, you know, the fees are subject to change as, you know, electricity, electricity prices fluctuate and. And, you know, other things are assessed or wherever. I'd be fine with that, too. Just to give us some more flexibility there. Cause I, I'm going to guess, did you say that the AMP UP app? And the charging station shows you how much it's going to charge you? Is that right?
I don't think the charging station does. I believe there is a QR code on the charging station. You scan it, it brings you to the app. And then the app has the rate.
Right, yeah. So I, I don't think people would really be looking to the policy, at least for the, the standard fee. Maybe they'd go and. May, maybe the additional fees would be, but I, I feel like those would be also be spelled out in the app as well. Cause otherwise, people wouldn't really know that they only have an extra hour of that grace period, right?
Yeah. So another piece is that the municipal center has just applied for the grant that we got to get these two charging stations. And they're going to be installing them at the municipal center. And I don't know if they're intending to charge or not, but our pricing should, should be the same, whether you're. Or non-existent. If it's, if they're not charging, we shouldn't charge. If they're charging, we should charge what they charge and it's, there's consistency. I can talk more with William Blake about that because I think he's working on it. And I think if they decide that they're not going to charge, it's a nice thing to do for the community, then I think we can't stop.
Cha, charge for the actual charging or the additional fees?
Whatever, whatever the town poli, so whatever the town policy is, that should be the policy we adopt. Our printing and faxing fees are based on what town or graph considers they should be.
Okay.
Our jurisdiction.
That's fair.
And, you know, to some degree, meeting room, they charge $50 for meeting rooms. That's what we charge for an individual's dues, $50 an hour, hundreds for organizations, but we're trying, just trying to be consistent with the government.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So I would be okay with, I like kind of what John said. You know, if we want, want to put a lot of information here, I do like the idea of saying. What was it? You know, like you said, fees can be subject to change, right? But I would, I would also say if we're going to write this policy, you know, add something like, you know, as of. This date, you know, whatever date reviewed and revised date, these are the current fee schedule.
Right.
As of this date, so we could change the fees at a later date. But I think as long as it's posted that as of this date, this is what, this is what it is. I don't know. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
What about putting in the QR code right, right in the, in the policy? We haven't done that yet. That throws some people for a loop.
Yeah. I mean, we're, the policy, like I wouldn't post the policy in the building. And I don't have a means to post it outside, but I could put a QR code sticker. On the charging station in addition to the sticker that's there for AMP UP.
Or, or a QR code that points to the policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Very narrow.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion?
So I just want to be clear, if I'm going to be merging these two policies together. Do we want pricing info in here or should I remove it as part of that merger? Or, or add language to say that, you know, it's subject to change?
Yeah, I think I would say that because, you know, that gives us a little bit of flexibility. You know, if somebody comes up to you and says. This, it's says a dollar in your policy. Oh, well, we haven't updated the policy and like, you know, we haven't brought this to policy committee yet. And then Beth has to give them free charging and, you know, which you might have to do anyways, if you change the fee and it says so in the policy, but at least. You know, you cover yourself. So I would add that, John.
Yeah. I mean, and, and I'm thinking it's gonna, you know, if the fee's not a dollar, you know, and it goes up, it's going to be. A dollar fifty or $2, you know, I don't think it's going to be shoot up to $10 or something like that. You know. So I, I'm not, I'm not too worried about the backlash on that. Especially if we put in here that it's subject to change, especially if someone actually goes and reads the policy. Hey, that's. That's a win.
Yep.
All right, so I'll add that language then.
Yeah, maybe use a separate line item like, like I.
Okay.
Okay. And Beth will add in the, the bit. About the policy. Process to challenge policy. What are we calling that again?
It is, um, appeals process.
Thank you. That's the word. Okay. Great. John, any further comment?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, let's see. So the next item says new business. Do we have any new business that anybody would like to bring up? Okay. Next item, moving on is public input. Do we have any members of the public who would like, actually anything in the chat? I don't believe I see anything. I don't see any additional people. Join the meeting tonight. Okay. Moving on. Our next meeting. So I'm going to pull up my personal schedule. All right. So we have. Board of trustees on the 25th. So at this point, I don't see us meeting before that, before the, the board of trustees meeting, certainly unless we have something that we need to. Read about. Let's see. Wednesdays are pretty good for people.
Yeah, so I think Debbie and I did draft a tentative meeting calendar, but then we didn't bring it to the board to ask them to vote. Like, we do have a. Fourth, you know, fourth Wednesday of every month calendar for the larger board meetings.
Yep.
According to this, we're actually a week early. We're going to give ourselves a break for the new year, but we hit the ground, because we didn't meet in December, so we met the fourth.
Yep.
But I, we do have a proposed tentative schedule. It's, um, we want to consider February 1st and March 1st for the next two meetings.
Yeah, I'm open either day. I would rather meet on. The eighth. So I feel like we could have a lot of things kind of buttoned up with legal by then. And that gives us two weeks before the board of trustees meeting on the 22nd. Yeah, back to back Wednesdays is, is not preferable for me.
Right, I just want to make sure it's not a Jewish holiday.
Yep. Okay. So we will set the next policy subcommittee meeting for February 8th. Oh, look at that. Saw for a brief second.
Gone.
Okay, very good. So the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, any second.
Come on, Deb. Okay, I was muted. I will second the motion to adjourn.
Great, any discussion?
Do we really want to adjourn though?
Yeah. A nice short term, we can, we can hang out. You stop recording.
I gotta go call my kids.
Okay, great. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, Aaron, I, Beth.
I.
Debbie?
I.
And John?
I.
Great, I declare the motion carried.